The county board commissioners are advised here by the video respect the government ethics act to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of such conflicts. And father of all is drafted to the prime dissipating the matter coming before this order county commissioners with respect of which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Which we have to be a very good issue.
Father's prayer. And my father, we just ask that you just continue just to be with us, watch over us. And most of all, father, we just ask that you just be with our county and just watch over our families and father, just watch over our citizens of the county. Father, we ask that you just continue just to touch and hear those who are seeking you and follow this to be with those discomfort those that needs your company. And father, we just ask that you just read us and father, just give us the words and and the wisdom that we need. And father, we ask that you just continue just to bless us, continue just to watch others and protect us. And thank you again for everything that you've got for us and father, just continue just to be with us in the common dance. And thank you for everything that you do in the precious Father's name, just God's prayer.
I'd like to pray just to hear the prayer of the United States of America and two republics where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any time for the adjournment?
Yes, sir. We'll add releases and discoveries to item eleven under discussion items.
Not much to approve the minutes from the continued meeting on June second, the special meeting on June thirteenth, special meeting on June fourteenth, work stop session on June twentieth, regular meeting on June twenty, and emergency joint meeting on June forty-nine. Order made on June one-eleven and then what's submitted to the judge.
I'm here today to talk about a small pickup service. I do trash pickup service. I do it for the county and I've been doing it for roughly the past two years. And it's come to my attention that they are starting charging me sixty dollars a ton of the dump. Um, and I want to clarify, I don't haul wood, I don't haul concrete, building materials, nothing. It's all house bags trash. So I I buy cans, a ninety-five gallon ones. Uh, I get contacted by customers wanting trash pickup. Take it to the customers, they bag their trash, I pick it up and haul it straight to the landfill without taking it to the dumpsters. Um, everything I haul, like I said, is a bag trash. There's no building material, no building materials. Um, it's really no different than my customers hauling to the dumpsters or to the landfill. Um, to one of the land group, to the dumpsters around the county. Um, the way I see it really is that every customer I take on is that much less trash ending up on the roads, ending up at the dumpsters for dumpster drivers to go through or the landfill employees having to pick up at the dumpsters. Um, and honestly, I'm making them, in my opinion, the uh, jobs for the employees a little easier. But more customers I take on, as I said, the less there is at the dumpsters for them to pick up. Um, not only am I helping trying to make the less mess at the around county, but I'm also doing a lot of good for like the elderly people of the county. Um, a lot of elderly people cannot do their own trash. It makes it easier on them not having to worry about it. Um, also, I heard that they're going to be shutting some of the dumpster sites down. And doing that is just going to make it that much harder for these elderly people to do their trash. Get it to the dumpsters in the winter, whether it be snow, rain, you know, it's harder on the elderly. And a question that uh, some of people has asked is why not just raise the price for my service? Um, and the simple answer for that is Robbinsville is a very poor county. People are on set incomes that just can't afford to pay a very big amount for this. A lot of the uh, a lot of them are disabled, uh, they're elderly customers, childrens that help pay for this, um, for the service. And they live out of towns and even like the rental houses. These rentals that they like vacation rental, the people that rent these don't even know where the cans really are. They don't know where the landfill is. So I take them a can, they put the trash in, and the owners don't have to worry about where's it going to end up. They're going to end up down the bank, is it going to on the roads, nothing like that. As soon as I come and I get it, put it directly in my truck and I'll take it directly away. Um, I also want to make note of this is I I've I do a sales tax in services as well. Each uh, quarter, I pay a sales tax, um, you know, state and local tax. And also I do a income tax at the end of the year on whatever I'm earning. And I just want to make the point that I'm a very small, uh, young service. I just can't afford to pay the sixty dollars a month per ton or sixty dollars per ton. Um, of trash every Monday. It adds up to right now, I'm going to be like six to eight hundred dollars a month just to pay the dump. I'm just uh, I'm just a young guy trying to make a living. That's all I am. But I would like the board, I would like to ask the board to reconsider this and kind of work something out with me. I'm not completely against paying. I don't care to pay. It's just the amount if we could work on that. Um, is there any questions? What's that? I charge for like residential, I do thirty a month. And I pick it up every single Monday for like rental houses because no matter how many signs you put on the cans or how much you tell the rentals to bag it, they don't bag it. So I have to buy bags and I bag it and put it in my truck and I charge them forty a month. Cause you know, it takes a lot more of my time to do these rentals. It's uh, based off like the can. It's a ninety-five gallon trash can. Like if you ever went to like Myrtle Beach or anything like that, it's the same like cans you see on the street. Yeah, just what they can put in. And so I like. I would say roughly yes. Now, some of the people, they use like the fifty gallon and seventy gallon bags and they'll get like one or two of them in. But I try my best to tell everyone to use like the smaller thirty gallons and they can get, you know, five or six of them. Yes. I really don't know how many bags. It just kind of varies, but I don't know if you've ever seen my truck out of that with the big black rack. That truck completely full is right around the ton, a little over a ton. Normally I think it's like twenty-two, twenty-three hundred pounds.
About how many loads of your truck you dump each week?
I dump two in mine and I have my little cousin that helps me and he dumps I think like three or four. He uh, he does like, I think around like a quarter of a ton for loads. I would say around two and a half to three tons, just guess to make a week.
So it's the pickup for the rentals once a week as well?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. I do the whole entire run on Monday. So as of right now, it's I've got it set for one day a week where I do it all in one day. I start, I start at four-thirty on Monday morning and I get done at four o'clock maybe. Well, it's more or less just mine, but my little cousin, he helps me. He's just got like a little truck. Not really that big, but yeah, he he does like I think like twenty cans or something, maybe thirty. Uh, he really don't do like a whole lot.
C P can green light us loud?
Yeah, he uh, on Monday he does. And like I said, I'm not against paying like a fee, whether it be like a weekly fee or something like that. I'm not against paying, so. I just, it's just the amount is was kind of hard to have. Cause like I said, I mean, a lot of these people there are on a fixed income. They just can't afford to pay that extra really. It's hard on them. So I will say this, I have a buddy that does the same exact thing in a different county. And he gets charged three dollars a ton and he's got like nine hundred.
And how many clients do you have?
Um, I'd have to count, but I've had roughly, I think around a hundred and forty-ish, hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty something. I've been trying to just slowly build it because it's, you know, a lot of driving and remembering.
Is the fuel cost kind of went up a little bit?
Oh, Lord. It's way up, you know? I would say on average in just a month, I count the driving I do through the week just for the trash business. I'm probably four, five, six hundred a month and just for four days a week, for four days a month, like five hundred bucks or something. And so that's, that's another hit on me. You know, when you add up buying cans, doing all the necessary stickers and all that on and you know, the fuel costs and doing sales tax, having to pay it and all that is just it it it's hard to pay that extra seven, eight hundred dollars a month considering all the expenses that are already there.
You may have mentioned this, but did you say approximately how many tons you take to recycle a month?
I know I figured it up the other day and the other day it was like two and a half to three tons of that is what I haul in one day. Around two and a half.
Can you do that?
Four to five. Yeah. Some months it will be five times and some months will be four. It depends on how the Monday hits, cause I do it every single Monday.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you and uh, thank you for your time.
Um, I'm Josh. I really have no idea what my name is, but I'm up here, so I'll just take it here for just a second. Obviously, I own a dumpster, roll-off dumpster business in town as well and really I have no no preference here or there. I'm here mainly at the meeting in very cheers of about the man sites. Because in fact, they will, it will affect my business either good or bad. But I just wanted to see, I knew that it was up for discussions and things had been approved and I just, I really didn't know what it was. So I just wanted to come down and I, I would see what the county was proposing and, you know, I hate that I walked in at the end of Gavin's talk there and he called me broke down some numbers and I don't know really exactly. I read over it, not sure in fact that what the numbers are or aren't, but you know, the numbers a lot of times don't lie. So just, just curious what the, what the board was thinking about doing it and maybe a time frame just to wrap my head around it. That's it. That's the one that I just, I read, I looked at it earlier.
So we'll take it and we'll, 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 we'll make further discussion on it. Since we just got acknowledged, I want to discuss your remarks. Yeah, if you want to add it to the GOC.
As much as it benefits me, I mean, just for, I don't know. As much as it benefits me, I suppose, everybody in this room to have the green cans, you know, I mean, those were, I mean, those are great to be able to go up and you know, throw it on person all the way, but unfortunately, I think it's, it's coming that time when, you know, there's just, people are lazy. And I mean, that's just, we won't get around that. And everybody in this, clue myself, I, I put stuff in those green cans, probably didn't need to go in those green cans. You know, at some point in time, the whole time that I put in this gallons and there's a lot of people that do it. But it's painful watching some of those fellows out there, you know, on up in their age, out there shoveling up all this stuff that people are throwing out of the dumpsters. And the amount of money, I know I need what it is, but the amount of money that the county's having to pay for these guys to get out there. They're better men than I am, cause I just, I wouldn't, I don't thought I could get an honest out there with a shovel and it all cold and you know, just putting stuff back into a dumpster, don't need to be in the, don't need to be in the parking lot anyway. But either way, sorry to kind of get off.
To still buy some, 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 some bit of these.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, control convenience. That's exactly what it is. So, but I'm just looking forward to just whichever way y'all decide to go with this. Yeah, sure. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I've got several things that I need to just bring to your attention. So I noticed one of these is down in the uh, reception items. Donna Stevens from the health department is wanting to move some money out of one department into another. And just since it is moving from one department into another, asked to go to the board. And it is within her department and she has sat down with being able to discuss the money, nobody making money. And it's, I think what she's doing is wanting to, uh, we just have to bring that to your attention. It's an amount of four thousand dollars that she made from one account to another. And the other thing, um, she has got, she's going to have to do some other changes within her budget as well, just due to um, some of the vacancies that have come open. So Ivy Robinson moved into Glenda's old position in the lab. And then in order for her to be able to have a nurse, and she's had to combine two positions and so that they would be able to have their funds for the nurse. And so we worked that out on paper as well. And and then her um, her environmental health person, she's going to be able to fund uh, out of her provider. And due to the fact of only seeing the Smoky Mouth and the Grove Smokies Foundation funds that she got, that is actually going to cover almost half of our providers' salaries. So then that freed up some money that we could move over into the food and lodging for our environmental health person. So that that will be able to help take care of that. So she's just needing to move some money into departmentally around. And a lot of it just has to be with the amount of money that she's received from the Smoky Mouth Foundation grant. And then it'll allow her to make the changes within her staff that she needs to make. Now, questions about that?
Questions, is there any questions?
All within her budget for the health department. And I was saying, you know, we want to draw her expenditure last week or earlier this week, you know, last week. And and compared her, you know, expenditure, compared to what her, you know, cost anticipated cost for the rest of the year, and I don't see a problem with that. She actually is going to have a little bit of money on super. Yes.
She not doing really amendment within her budget?
She wanted me to, but she wanted to get approval from you guys first and then we'll create the budget amendment.
Uh, personally, I think, I think she needs to amend one and then.
We'll work on that together and then I'll present it out our next morning. And then also, I need a motion to open a new checking account for the sheriff's department. They were given some money for um, a vote. So this would be thrown down to help and from sheriff's department, it will actually be a vote, so it'll be on the water. And they're wanting to start a new banking account for, and it would just be what they're calling it, their marine account. And it was just going towards funding this vote. And it was um, all I have is the person, it was Brian, like the donation.
Yeah, I think it was derivative of one of them. And then the check came from.
I wasn't getting that either, I'm sorry.
I've got it in my safe. Yeah, it's quite a bit of money.
They didn't want to have a banking account, uh, you know, restricted banking account set up since that money would be. So I have to make a resolution in time that we open a new banking account, so I just have a motion to.
Anybody have a question about wrestling, okay, I'm telling, I have my information there.
Then I have some information. Uh, this is from Via Health. They provided us a quarterly report. They asked that presented to our board. And it's basically just telling you, um, this is part of the health, the mental health program that we have going on. They just wanted to share this report. I can make copies of this and pass this around, but it's just a quarterly report from the counties. And if you look at just Grand County, our budget is showing at six thousand dollars in the actual six thousand. So we're in speakers for a hundred percent for the mental health. And this is part of what goes through the JCPC and so Via Health falls under that grant. And that's basically granted. And then we have um, some debt set off bills of a patient and the family members have come forward and said that the patient has actually passed away. Uh, so the tax collector always reached out. I wanted to know how we want to handle these. Do we want to write off these bills? Do we allow the family members to absorb them?
If there's an estate open, then it will go for the estate. But if there's no estate, then it'll be a write-off. But you need to kind of investigate, make sure it's no estate.
And then I have just to say my second thing still, so the town of Robbinsville has passed off the Florida Labor Expanse for the Heritage Fund. And I think it was near, I guess that would.
And the festivals committee did not promote that.
That's not a grand county bill. That's a festival fee bill, so that doesn't relate to grand county taxpayers.
And then also, Missy Pembry has sent um, an email to us. And she's wanting to put in a grant application to the nine-one-four for consideration. And the county would be responsible for the cost of grant and it would be reimbursable. And it's basically a grant for, they're calling it twenty-twenty-three portable radio, S A two grants. And she's just asking for permission to put in for this grant. And basically the cost is working like that it would be thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
I was thinking we gave her. She may have already got the, did she have?
And um, your report is in front of you and um, on page one. And the uninsureded cash balance, which are the general funds at the United Community Bank and in our North Carolina Capital Management Trust and for the end of August are five million, three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents. And we are trending a little low from our fiscal year, for this fiscal year in comparison to last fiscal year. And so that variance is um, three million and some change. And then if you go down and look at your capital projects, that fund is in at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. We have three point two million there and that is trending upwards from the two point nine that it was at the same time last year. The school capital project account is also at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. It's up to one nine, a hundred and nineteen thousand from a hundred and fourteen thousand. That's basically the student interest that the program got out here. And then the American Rescue Plan Act, which is housed at United Community Bank is also, it's up to eight hundred and forty-nine thousand from eight nineteen. And again, that's just been earning some interest. Uh, we also have the Skid Grant Courthouse, which is housed at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. And it's up to four point nine million and that's down from the five million and that just has to do with the architectural reasons that we paid so far. And then we have our, our, it's all in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust accounts. And it is forty-six thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. That's just for this month. So our year-to-date is seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents. And then if you flip over most of that, page two, is most of that is disposable now. I'll actually go over to page thirty. And I have highlighted, uh, in yellow is the comparisons and in green is actually where our numbers for August are. So this is for our total tax collections. And this comes from our real officer board that our tax collectors always provides us with. So the current year and so far for tax collections, for four current year, we have collected five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-two cents. For prior years that are still owed, we've collected nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cent. And so then the total of those combined is five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. And DMV taxes that we have collected, we've collected sixty-four thousand and eighty-four dollars. And if you come down to the year-to-date, we have collected, yeah, current year and previous years on our real, which is our property taxes, one point three million and current year-to-date. And then on our DMVs, we have collected a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And looking at previous years, um, the previous years, we do have to keep the year-to-date numbers, you do have to keep in mind that those do include all of the months. So we're only looking at two months for the twenty, the fiscal year in twenty twenty-four. So the numbers that are on the year-to-date, those do include all twelve months of the prior years. And our percentages and for our levies, we're at fourteen point eight-two percent. And the previous year-to-date, we were at seventeen point four-three percent. And then our total collections and monthly for our levies was one point three. If you go onto page four, go down towards the bottom where it's highlighted in yellow and when there are some pink areas, I did highlight those in paint just simply because I wanted to discuss them a bit. And so our revenues for August, um, is four hundred and seventy-five. And so our revenues for August, um, is four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. If you look at the trends from last year, we are down considerably, and that's why I highlighted that in pink. I did want to bring to your attention, uh, that we have, uh, some things that are outstanding that we're, they're waiting on the money for. We've got the second, um, the second part of the Latchba funding is pending, I have done the, which is the application part of it, where you have to go and request it, I've done that, we're waiting on that to come down. So that would be four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents, we know that money is coming in. We also did have to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand for the Grand County School Stadium renovations, which we typically don't pay that out until June. So we did have to front that money, so that is another reason that our revenue is down. And so we just had paid off, and we won in June, and then we have to turn around and pay another two hundred and fifty thousand now, which is technically this next year, which we wouldn't pay out until June here. So we've got that out, and then we also have paid for the tuning trucks at sanitation out of our general funds. And we have put in a request for reimbursement, which is, you know, through the grant process, uh, Volkswagen and the DEQ. And that will be a reimbursement of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we're waiting on that money as well to come back. Then we've had a Snowberg Stream Flow Rehabilitation Project rolling, and I, we just received a check for two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Conservation Services, so that will get deposited. And then we are ending another reimbursement on that, which we have to pay out the contractors prior to, you know, we have to pay them out when we get reimbursed based on the grants. So we are waiting on another three hundred and eighty-three thousand from the USDA from the Natural Resources Conservation Services. So we are waiting for that money as well. And then the jail had a grant through the Department of Public Safety, and that was for COVID education and COVID supplies, so we're waiting on a reimbursement there for thirty-two thousand dollars. And then on one of our CDBG grants, the COVID grant, we're, we're waiting on a payment for reimbursement that we submitted for another thirty-eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So that's one point six million dollars in revenues that we are anticipating right now, that have not come in yet, but we do know it's forthcoming.
How many, how many, so how many more companies did you?
Um, we need one.
So. Well, is there anybody else that saw that?
Well, yeah, the Snowberg Project schools, the trucks for sanitation.
So my very.
Yeah. I mean, we had, you know, which we, if you take out the, if you take out the four hundred and fifty-four thousand for the Latchba funding, and we still, we still got one point two million. But we're outstanding right now. And that would bring us more considerably back, you know, into the numbers that we have here. And so our expenditures have increased, and as you can tell, our expenditures for August were three point seven million, and then you have to take into consideration all of these expenses that were waiting to be reimbursed for. So all of those expenses are in that number to twelve. So our deficit right now is three point two million. Over to page five, it will show you our revenues today, it's for the fiscal year, and it will also show you our expenditures today. And when you're looking at the comparisons across for the previous ten years, just to keep into consideration that those are the revenues and expenditures for the entire year versus the column that you're looking at is just for this year. So July and August timeline. Do you have any questions about that?
I think we talked, um, just a second about at, at the last meeting, uh, the interest rate we were getting from the North Carolina Fund versus the UCB.
That was actually the travel tourism board meeting that we talked about.
Right, I remember that meeting.
No, but that's okay, I did get some information there, um, I would have to go look it up, but I have it in my travel and tourism files on my desk. If you'd like, I can run me that after I finish my report.
We can do that later, that, that it was a bit short.
No, but the North Carolina Capital Management Trust one is, is a very weird formula, and so that one's really hard to figure. But now one of the representatives says he did not mind to come sit down with us and help us look through it. And I think we might take it into consideration, we have several accounts, we have a lot of revenue accounts, and a lot of them are for designated funds. And, and we have them at United Community Bank, and we have them at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. But I would like to be able to discuss those, so that we know exactly what things are coming out of what. I need some clarification on that, and I feel like there's also some transfers that probably need to be made from some account to other accounts, but I'm not familiar enough with the restrictions on such a banking accounts at this time. And to do that, so I have not made any transfers unless I, you know, unless I've been paid a dollar, I'll just make those transfers.
Well, I mean, we could probably get the, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if I need to talk to Becky Garland, our predecessor, just to talk about the purpose of each of the bank accounts. And I'm not really sure, but I, I feel like there are transfers that need to be made from one account to another. I know it can be the ARBA account, that ARBA account is sitting pretty high, but we also use that ARBA funds to find a lot of this stuff that happened at the urgent care. So I feel like a transfer is necessary there, that I was told to hold off. So, um, I haven't done anything on that yet, but then we also have our capital project accounts that are at North Carolina Capital Management Trust, and I feel like we probably should be utilizing some of that one too. So I mean, I just need some clarification on what the accounts are set up for, and what their intents are, you know, are the funds restricted, are they not? Which on some of them, I, I do know, there's, there's a handful of them that I do understand the purpose of, but there are some, some I just kind of need some education on, whether it be from Becky, whether it be from North Carolina Capital Management Trust.
I'd like to say I know how to do that, and I know, uh, so, so I would be there, but, uh, Natasha. Nobody kind of understands management, uh. You worked with them in the earlier.
Yes, I've met with him, and he's also been the one to kind of sit back down at the end, uh, and go through everything that we wanted to discuss. And we also have, uh, we're also scheduled to have him for a meeting, so they can help us with financial planning as well, and I would really like to rely heavily on him for recommendations on how we can handle it.
Six is what I think we're going to schedule him for, we are continuing on twenty-six.
This was.
Yeah, we'll just meet with him after that, that's place on the board. That's on Tuesday.
Twenty-six on this one?
Yes.
If you flip over to page six, um, this is our sales tax collections, uh, to date, it's, um, and this one is weird the way that it's collected. So the month that it's distributed is actually not for the money for the month that it's collected. So we were just distributed money in August, that was actually for June of twenty, for June of twenty twenty, she, or twenty twenty-three, but it would have technically fallen into the previous fiscal year. And, but this is the way we have to account for it, the two-monthly, so, um, the funds that we have received were the two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And if you look at last year's, we're pretty even, our, um, our variance is twelve thousand, two oh five eight nine. And so as far as the, the school's portion of the five twenty-four would be eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. And then. Uh, so then a quarter cent sales tax that has collected since the inception, we've actually collected one point one million dollars. And we've transferred, as far as I can tell, we've actually transferred all the money that's supposed to go into the capital project fund. And we've actually transferred more over than what needed to be transferred, but again, I want to get some clarification on that account. And so it looks like we transferred all the money over that was necessary to be transferred over, to keep that money restricted, since that is set aside. And then if you go to page seven, we've got the analysis of our past due taxes, so our tax collectors have actually done a really good job. If you look at the, the top row, and those, that information is from July, uh, twenty thirteen, and that's when we first started for closures, and so that's when we started tracking the data. So those amounts that are under that seven one twenty thirteen column, uh, totaled, uh, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, that was still due. And they've actually been able to collect, um, actually, they brought it down to eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So they've actually collected four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents of old taxes that were passed to you two years of two thousand and five to two thousand and fourteen. And then if you move down to the next row, uh, this data, um, pulled in from the, uh, July thirty-first of twenty twenty. And, um, for some reason, that one column did not total, I apologize, because that one's reporting. But, um, they've brought those amounts down considerably as well, except now we have the current year taxes, which is seven point five million, that still need to be collected. So then our, our number that still has to be collected for, uh, that would bring us current through this one year, twenty twenty-three, would be eight point one million. But they have brought our accounts down considerably.
That is the end of all of my information, you guys have any questions? And we do have, um, something to add that I would like to ask, and we're born to consider, and I don't know if you want to talk about it now, if you want to wait until the discussions. It's, you have a presentation in front of you, um, it's basically, um, it's an outline, outlining the pros and cons between two different payroll and HR services. And so right now, the company that we use for all of our financial management and for our payroll and our HR is AdminsUp Tech. And we've been using them, I'm not sure when we started using them, but we've been using them for a while. And they, they have certain earnings, and I think the financial management portion of it still does see earnings very well. And I don't think that there's a necessary change there. And as far as the payroll side of things and the human resources side of things, we have noticed that it is indeed lacking quite a bit. And so we have, um, talked with ADP, we have had some Zoom meetings with ADP, and we've gone through, you know, questions and answers and, and going through all of that information. So you guys have a proposal in front of you that Lainey has worked on. Um, Lainey Stewart is our new payroll processor, she handles all of our payroll and all of our deductions. And right now, we, um, we're bi-weekly paid, so you basically have one week that you're processing payroll, and then you have a week off. And so the, on the week that she's had, we call it off per se, it's not necessarily off, because on your off week, you're catching up on all your filing, you're catching up on your federal tax filings, your state tax filings, you're catching up on sending out child support that was deducted. You're catching up on property taxes that was deducted, you're taking care of garnishments, that was deducted. So that week is not, is not, you're not bored for sure, you're not twiddling your thumbs. And then she also helps make any capacity that's necessary, she's been helping with the AC processing as well. So she's been an absolute godsend today. Uh, so she has gone through and compared these, the two different operating systems. Uh, so right now, we have two hundred and four employees. And, and if you, if you look at how many people are actually using the payroll, um, software that we have right now, we only have twenty-seven users. Um, out of two hundred and four employees, we have twenty-seven users. So that, that data doesn't speak a lot, and I know some people are not tech savvy, I also know that if it's not easy, a lot of people will quit, and they will go forward with it. But we would like to see, um, payroll that is more user-friendly, number one. And, and number two, we'd like for the employee to be able to get into it and be able to see what they have available.
Yeah, so I'm going to keep talking through this just what I'm going to have myself. So on the human resources side of ADP, um, you can post employee recruitment, so like if you have a job posting and you want to be an internal job posting first, you can post that through ADP, and all of the employees will be alerted, and they will know about internal job posting. And there's also unlimited storage for documents, and so it's all, it's cloud-based, so we have unlimited storage. So if you take right now what we're using in the AdminsUp Tech, it is all based on the software, and it should store it in the software. And so basically what we're using now are paper copies, we have paper copies of everything, and we're not digitized at all. So therefore, one of the things that our auditors brought into play when they were here a few weeks ago was that everything they request, we're having to run back to a manual file. And then pull it out, scan it, drop it into their shared files, and he's, they just thought it was ridiculous, that was when I digitized, number one, to be able to have access to it all. It's quicker to be able to drop them into shared files. So that is one thing that like ADP will have, that they may house, so it's not going to take up server space, it's all going to be housed on, um, the cloud. So then we won't have to worry about increased server space and that cost that it would bring in. And it also allows us to have job descriptions in the system, and so that's one of the things Katie, um, Katie Beasley, that campus hired to be her HR deputy director. She has been working on job descriptions and updating those to make sure that they're within the label rounds, you know, and getting those updated for every person that we currently have employed. So these in-system job descriptions and expectations will be there, which is very helpful for our employees to know what the, what we hired them to do, they know what their job description is. And then it also helps us to do evaluations, because we know what goals social posts should be meeting, and therefore would help with evaluations. It also contains like an all-in-one boarding process, so right now, when we hire somebody, we have to fit them into the HR system. And not everything imports over into the payroll, so then you kind of have to manually import it into the payroll. And then you have to go onto each of the individual benefits sites and enroll them individually. Now, a lot of our mistakes have happened, because you've enrolled in one place and you've just neglected to enroll them in the other places. So ADP hooks up with our benefits, they have, when you hire someone in and you onboard them into HR, it automatically imports all of the data into payroll. And automatically shoots it out for enrollment into all of the eligible plans for our benefits. So it's kind of a dashboard-type situation. Um, they also have like, uh, you can do training and development courses that you can put on through ADP, so if there's like certain things, like I know Dawn and Brian Stevens occasionally have trained, but we all have to participate in. They can put that out there, and they can assign it to certain employees, they can do that training straight through to ADP. And.
And no costs, no additional costs?
No additional costs, right. They also, you can keep your company policies out there, and then at any time, let's say we update a company policy, it pushes it out to each of the employees, and they have to, you know, digitally sign it, or they can print it, bring it back into us. But it keeps track of who's has the updated policies, et cetera. And, and this is one thing that is very beneficial, um, they take care of all, uh, um. Well, no, that was all the benefits, sorry, I said that. So they take care of all of the enrollment into the benefits for, for us, I've already mentioned that. And then you can also monitor the employees' progress, because it houses everything into one, into one platform. So the, the human resources side of it is, is really neat, and then when you go into the payroll side of it, we have tried to get our county onto an electronic time clock system for quite a while. And like I told you in the numbers before, we literally have twenty-seven people that are active users. And so we have over two hundred employees, and only twenty-seven people are utilizing the electronic time clock system. So it takes a good solid four days of data entry to get your payroll in. So that's what Lainey's been, it's four days of the whole week, they're putting payroll, and if we're utilizing the electronic time clock system, then it's basically every person is clocking in and clocking out. And so I know there's been some pushback on that, and, and we talked to some of the different departments that have different situations. And the one thing about ADP is they, you can clock in from your phone, you can clock in from a tablet, you can install a kiosk somewhere, and maybe they would possibly have a badge, where they would scan their badge in and clock in. Because I know not everyone sits at a desk, you know, not everyone, you know, has the ability to clock in, clock out. Of course, that brings in concerns, because they're like, well, if they can clock in from their phone, then they could clock in from anywhere. But it does have, um, the location services attached to it, so it will let you know where they clocked in from. And again, it would be up to their supervisor to approve their time, so if their supervisor sees that they clocked in and they were, you know, at war when they clocked in, um, then obviously they're not going to approve that time. So they can see where their, where their location services are, and if they actually went into work or what have you. And it would eliminate the time, the time entry, the data entry of the, of the time clock. You can also, um, so it actually puts the, the burden back on the directors to approve their time. So right now, we're getting a paper time sheet, someone signs off on a paper time sheet, most of the time they've not checked the hours, tackle. Most of the time, they've not checked the hours, calculated time, and calculations are incorrect. We're having to call down and say, hey, you put ten hours, but the calculation's only four, eight hours. Oh, sorry, just missed that. But this kind of puts it back on down to check in as they're going. So, um, and then also the, um, directors can look in their, in their version of it, see all of their employees, see who's getting close to overtime, if they need to do any shift changes, et cetera. Or if they see that someone's low on hours, et cetera, they can, they can manage their shifts. So, um, ADP also takes care of all of the federal tax deposits for you. They take care of the state deposits for you, they take care of the child support, they take care of any garnishments, they do all of the recording for you.
Yes, you're doing it manually now.
We're doing it manually now. So they do all of the recording for you. And then, um, again, you can keep, um, it, it takes care of your leave requests, like it routes, but like if I put in a leave request, it would route my, would request to my supervisor, who would be Kim. So it would let her know that she has to approve my leave. So it puts it all back into the proper chain of command where things are supposed to be approved. Um, and then you can customize it, the directors can customize the reports however they need. They have really neat reports that you can customize to get them the information that they need. Because I know transit, health department, and social services have state reports that are due every month. And, um, they have to wait on us to get them the data. This way, they can build the reports, like that, the way they want them, and as soon as that payroll is posted, they can get it processed and it will pull those reports for them. I think it's gonna be beneficial across the board, just to help everybody with their reporting. And then if you move on to the employee dashboard side of it, so the employees can actually see, they can log into their employee portal, they would have their clock-in access, they would also have access to all of their retirement, like the links where the, the retirement goes to, uh, the contact information for their brokers for the life insurance, or if they need to make changes. They could make changes through their portal, and it automatically sends out the changes out to the benefit providers. So it, it takes care of that for us. And then, um, they can schedule, they can work on their schedules, they can work on their time worked overview. So it just gives the, um, like, for example, the employee can see what their schedule is and they can make adjustments. You know, they can request leave through there, they can see their, um, their role in PTO, they can see, you know, how much they've used, how much they have left, et cetera. That's what they would hear in their leave request. They would have, anytime that there's an accounting-wide notification that we need to put out, it automatically goes to each of the employees, their personalized dashboard in the work, and there's kind of wide notifications that they have. And it's very user-friendly, you don't have to be very tech savvy, it's very user-friendly. Um, and the, and, uh, on the administration side of it, um, as far as Kim's, Kim's job, it takes care of all the ACA reporting as well. So Kim has been doing that manually, and that's what we have to report back to the federal government, that we offered the insurance to this employee so many months out of the year, et cetera. It does the ACA reporting for you as well. Um, so, and then when we term somebody or you need to make a change to somebody, everything that you do, it, you know, it intertwines with each of the departments. So if you made a salary change to somebody, it automatically reports that to their life insurance, because their life insurance is based on a percentage of their annual salary. So those type of things, it makes all of those changes for you. Um, as far as the annual updates and the data, again, it's just, everything's clear, it has size, you can run all kinds of customizable reports. You're not stuck to just the standard reports, you can build the reports yourself and tell it what fields you want it to bring over. So you can build your own reports instead of being stuck into just like little box reports. So that's one thing that will help us a lot, that will help us considerably. So, um, they, so ADP, if we were to go beyond, they will bring over seven years of data transfer from the old program to the new. So that would be best in compliance with like our payroll retention, um, policy. So it brings over seven years, we have a support administrator that would be assigned to us, they would come and do like high-level training, then they'd come and do lower-level training. And then after that, you would have a twenty-four-seven support line that you can have access to. And they also grant all of the checks for us and process all of the, the direct deposits for us. So right now, we manually do that, we have to upload the direct deposits into the bank, and we have to make them do that. So ADP will cover that as well, they take over the direct deposits, they grant the checks physically for you and overnight, and you're on your desk by the next morning. And the annual updates that have to happen, they, they, because it's a web-based program, you don't have to have a software update every so many years, because it's all, it's all on the web. So any updates that happen, they happen during your contract period and no charge. So with our goals, what we, what our goal is for payroll is to, number one, we, we've talked several times, I know that he's brought to your attention as well, that we, we felt like there was always a need for a fourth person in finance. And honestly, with the workload that this program is gonna take off of us, I almost feel like it's almost gonna be our fourth person. Because it will free up so much of Lainey's time that she'll be able to kick in and assist with other duties. So that's one of the things. And then I think it will help employees to be able to see more what they have available, it lets them know exactly on one dashboard what benefits they have for areas. You know, they can look at the levels, they can look at everything on their employee portal. So I think it will be beneficial for them, just that they'll be more educated on what they actually have through the accounting. And then we want to have a cohesive working environment between the departments and employees, and we saw that this will help considerably with that. So if you look at the next to the last page, so obviously it all comes down to price. Um, AdminsGoTech, we have a three-year, uh, when you renew, you always renew for three years with them. But the problem with AdminsGoTech is our three-year price renewal guarantee is thirty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. But there's an end-of-life occurring, and I actually got the date on that wrong, it's in March of two thousand and twenty-four. So they will no longer support that software. So we will have it, but they haven't supported it anymore. So like, we can call and ask for support, and they will no longer support us after that date. So then we would have to upgrade to their new latest in greatest. Um, and so their new latest in greatest is that thirty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. But then you also have to buy a separate time clock piece, they do not, it's not an all-inclusive. So we would have to buy another time clock piece, which we never did receive the quote on that. And so it would be in addition to the thirty-one thousand, would it be the time clock piece where people would electronically clock in and out? If all are- Uh, the, the representative attorney could be either from ten to twelve. So, um, with ADP, with all the services that we just discussed, their three-year price guarantee is thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. And so to me, it's a no-brainer, with the amount of services that they provide and the, the support that it's gonna provide to our finance department. I think it eliminates them any fourth person at this time. And I think that it's way, uh, almost a three-thousand-dollar difference is a better investment than us carrying a whole fourth person to our department, which could, you know, see tremendously. So my recommendation is that we switch to ADP. Of course, we would not do so until January first, because we wouldn't do anything with the payroll system in here. And that way, we didn't shout the old year with AdminsGoTech, and then start January first with ADP. That's my recommendation and answer. So forward for you guys to, but you know your thoughts, questions.
Do you have any questions?
I personally am not a fan of AdminsGoTech. How many suggestions? I think that ADP would be a little bit over the top.
Uh, I think my, I can check with some other companies as well. ADP does not have a good reputation, where the Morris Company and these other companies have, uh, actually been sued. Been fined, has actually been fined by the federal government and also in the states, because of lack of payment. Uh, they failed to report, uh, employment, and also failed to report, uh, taxes and also pay taxes. They've, uh, uh, says it's a error and they're, uh, hostage and overlooked and, uh, employer has to pay the fines and it comes up with, um, the, uh, but. We actually, they looked at this company and, uh, we turned them down through the fact that we had some investigation on them. Threat that we talked, it was out of the land. We was, we was not very impressed, so we began, we got us, but in fact, it was some, that it was not, uh, as reputable as they seem to be.
Do you have any, uh, suggestions? Are there, other, uh?
We, we went through, uh, a lot. They are based with, um, the Russell Shield. They tied in the Russell Shield and they, they do HR and they do, uh, onboarding as well. And they tie in with the Russell Shield and they, uh, tie in with the, uh, uh, benefit packages. And also there's, um, Time Horse, and also, uh, Net Checks. There's a company called Net Checks and it does the same process as, uh, ADP does as well. And, uh, this is kind of a sad way, but, uh, ADP was just a little bit of a shade in, in our, in our opinion, if you see the shade.
Anybody else?
What guy made it through? See, you know, um, it will be research.
If we're going to switch off other companies, we have to make a decision quickly. I would say at least by the next board meeting, we'll need to have some options, because, um, the implementation process, they have to start the training and the implementation of all the records. So January is not far away, that's what I'd like to think that is. The, the deadline is today. Deadline for ADP to get signed up on that was today, for it to happen, um, January one implementation.
What's that, Mary, what's your deal?
And we realistically, our office is gonna be, I can sign here, and I can make sure that the taxes are paid and, um, so. Build control. I know that turn also just transitioned over to ADP.
I think we certainly need to pay attention to, uh, product, uh, there requires some better approach. I don't have those, because you certainly have a patient on any other companies or what you're, what you're on, they must spend very thoroughly of what you're giving us here, I think. Wouldn't it give you my great call when we had the ADP, uh, renew here at that time, or any other?
Yeah, we trained a little, uh, in two thousand and nine, ten, twelve, maybe.
When?
Two, three, eleven, uh, services that you go to back on.
We didn't have any problems, I think there was one time that the male got caught up, checks arrived, lady, he may remember that. Um, maybe one time out of the, out of the four or five years that we, I can restore that and see if, if they wanna, I'm sure they'll work with this.
And if I can add, like, most of these services are optional, like, we wouldn't have to let them print checks, like, we only have a few employees that need print checks, we can continue to print checks. And we can also continue to, uh, like, I mean, double-check taxes. But I do know that there are several other small companies in Rollins though that are switching to ADP as well. And as an employee, I've been a member of ADP and it is amazing, so. Right now, they're the only person that can compete with the, with the money, like, some of these, some of these, or any, and we have other companies as well. And then there's also like a safe check, we, so each payroll period, we've recorded our federal taxes and our state taxes and all the garnishments and that type of thing. But then the safeguards to that is when we do our quarterly reporting. So when we do our quarterly reporting, you have to do the NC five Q, I believe it is. And that basically has to match back up to everything that you've done during that, that, that quarter. So I mean, we could maybe allow them to do our, you know, payroll reporting, but then us continue to kind of do the safe check on the quarterly reporting, just to ensure that everything's aligned and that, that would be a good safeguard. Because you do the same for the federal taxes as well, it's been, um, nine forty-one, it's the nine forty-one for the federal and then the NC five Q for the state taxes. So you could, we could continue to do the quarterly reporting just to make sure that those are aligned and that things are being paid in properly.
What, and what's the point, I know it's, I know it's zero twelve thousand dollars, we can just, uh, check it ourselves.
I'm gonna get it set.
I think, I have somebody who'd go with ADP and just let me do the quarterly reports and that's enough.
That was it.
I'll do what she wants to say, I'll leave it. Do you have a question? That's all for lunch.
That is all.
Yeah, any ground, like, not a lot of advice, questions? All right, John. What about the company? Steph? What's this, uh, so much already?
We have three hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents in disbursements. And our leases are six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Most of that is going to be in our utilities.
Motion. Motion, yes, sir. I agree. There, the seven?
Yes, sir. There's two thousand and fourteen shares.
One day, I don't know.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm Spanish.
Give him a little break. Tim sold it, four thousand dollars, six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars carried by. And they did, they did this before.
We did a follow-up, yeah, but, yeah.
So they're running, just as they're able to, uh, two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars carried, so with four thousand dollars. I'll let you go with a little action, I'm just kidding, we know about it.
Okay, the Hazy Jenkins Cemetery, um, the Chris family wants to donate this to the cemetery commission. So I didn't know if you wanted to get rid of Attorney Coward, that we'd wanna do a, uh, they didn't know what to do, this is John and Nina. So I know it's a matter of getting the, um, deeds transferred and all that, so just wanted that noted and open.
Where is the, is Jalen's?
It is. Oh, okay. Yeah, obstacle grocery, stand there and look straight up at him, yeah.
How big is it? It's not big, it's, 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 uh.
Yeah. They do all the, and they want to know, and it would go to the cemetery commission, uh, because we don't want that in the county commissioner part.
We already have yours.
Yeah, that's okay, if you wanna, uh, I can get Attorney Coward the information to get ahold of Nina and John, if y'all are okay with that. I would extend it after they got the deed. The NCDIT, they need to do a, a presentation, a Zoom, um, and this is the people who have the grant, um, on the fiber, and they're just asking- And they're just asking for a possible date. Rodney Gray is the fiber on the grant and they just need to come in and tell you all about it. It's the one you were giving the art funding to for the fifteen thousand. And let you know where they're going to be located and how many houses definitely connected. So you want to do that, entertain that on the twenty-sixth, or we're getting too much for that on the twenty-sixth? It shouldn't last that long. That is going to be a public hearing for transit and, uh, discussing. Yeah, and I mean, we're getting rid of the, yeah. Is that a thing, y'all? Uh, United Society, I had been getting several, uh, complaints that they will not take our animals from Robbinsville. We do give an appropriation, I did call. They had been full and they were just requesting that the, um, people wait and hold them for a couple of weeks and then they would take them. She said they're not going to refuse to take them and they absolutely had nowhere to take them to, to bring them on. But that's why they were asking them just to hold until they could get some and send up north. So she wanted me to let y'all know that they are not going to use it to taking the animals from, uh, Gray County. They were just, uh, very full at that time. Uh, senior celebration is going to be at Braxton City, nine twenty-two, at ten, from ten to two. Everybody's invited to go. It, it's a great thing for our senior citizens. Um, the permission to move the money, did we do a motion on that already? I don't think, no, we're going to wait. Uh, that is for, uh, we're going to do a budget meeting and then y'all can make that motion. We did receive a sixty-two hundred dollar grant for the dental clinic, um, chairs or that equipment that went on chairs. I'm sure Donna will be bringing that to y'all at the next House floor meeting. And then permission to advertise for a tax assessor assistant, you know, now that she's taken on that. Uh, she's, and then, uh, one of the, um, workers is having stomach issues and have been out some on M L A. So she's asking permission to advertise for a tax assessor assistant. That would be a full time, and I think it was budgeted, I'm not quite sure, but I know it was talked about during budget because of her being short-staffed. I think we just, I think we added it. Uh, they have been rather busy, I guess you could see, so. Uh, notification of the Venus Camp Falls name by the U S Board of Geographic names. If you'll recall, they were trying to name it after an individual that really, that wasn't from Gray County. And commissioners had asked that it be called the Venus Camp Falls, the next, the designation that it did receive. So the names one are the polls that were received, uh, the new hiring of part-time custodian, El War. Urgent care goes closing, that was posted in the paper on that seventh day. We had an audit extension of nine eleven, advance to, uh, Elgood for PTO. Uh, and then we hired a, uh, account payable assistant, uh, for, uh, finance. And those all passed.
Were they all unanimous or they weren't?
They were all, they were, they were not all unanimous. There was a couple of ones that didn't have a unanimous, they, uh, the motion carried.
I'm going to do that, Jane, you have to work through a more time.
Always, uh.
Much as I've worked with.
I'm ready.
Okay. And you're a ladies.
Yes, sir.
That motion going to block session, G F M will be through the way to eleven, nine, one, three, five, six. Permission to, uh, from the motion, if anyone are proven to post now with contact.
Okay. Oh, I, I want to talk, talk about my taxes, because they're over three times higher than they've been at the beginning. And there's been nothing done other than just cutting the grass and everything. I just want to waste the time. I, I'm, I'm eighty-six years old and I'm a little social security, I can't pay that kind of taxes.
What's, what's my status?
It's in your packet there. It's on the books for six sixty-five, three.
What was the line in the order right now?
I see there's several pieces. Six sixty-two, eight, I believe it's the one now, in the.
Have you got to raise the price for anything, Finn? Have you got to raise the prices for anything on that?
No, the real estate people come back and want to sell it. And I, and I told them, you know, it'd be all right. And they, I think what they done, I think they put the price down that nobody can buy it. Because we had, they had some people come over there and they said, look, Tyrell, one more building, and then they come back and talk to me about it. Cause they were talking about that, kind of that kind of money.
Have you talked, have you talked to the tax office?
Yeah.
In Poli's yet?
Before I came down here. Uh, that's two days ago. They, they, they're the ones that sent me down here.
I think they were making an adjustment because there was no creek, so they were doing some adjustments on that.
I, I love for somebody to come up and look at it, just let me show them what, what I've got.
The forty acres previously had been evaluated at like one twenty-four, seven, thirty, and it went up to six sixty-two, eight. And then it was on the list and that's when.
Yeah, the realtor hasn't listed for one point two million.
I know. I can't believe that.
Why is there not a different person nationally, land types? Twenty-two, two, three, four, five, it's multiple, it's multiple places.
Yes, it's multiple. It's not just one, I think there's a couple.
Why don't we have, why don't we have a group of forty acres?
I, I think he had different, uh, tax cards. I think this is just one particular piece is the forty acres.
The landing crosses on the twenty-two tax card, their, their highest best use is, is three different, three different things. That's the rate, the wind grid, all forty acres under a river creek. Was that the same previously?
It probably was, uh. She had changed the wood length, I think, to, um.
What's it in?
Twenty-two hundred an acre and then open pasture was sixty-five hundred. And then she's got something S F R, ten thousand an acre. And then she put, looks like the mobile home and the river and the creek, and he said there was no creek.
All right. Let us get with our tax department and we'll be in touch with you soon when you do.
Okay. Do I need to do anything?
I'll just wait on part of mine.
She'll see you later, Billy.
Oh, okay. If somebody wants to come up and look at that, I'd be glad to show them around.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.